Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is June 3, 2025. It is 9:30 sharp. We are in the boardroom. I'll ask the auditor to do roll call for attendance, please.
Erickson?
Here.
Here?
Here.
Here.
Here. We do have a quorum. At this time, if you'd kindly rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, are there any agenda deletions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll move on to our first item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. Meeting minutes to approve: May 20, 2025, Board meeting; May 27, 2025, Special meeting; May 27, 2025, Work Session; B, approve new hire, Abigail Sleeth, Motor Vehicle Specialist, Treasurer's Office, effective June 6, 2025; C, approve retail tobacco license for Dollar General Store, number 21634, at 1035 G-50th Highway, St. Charles; D, approve two J&amp;M Display Inc. applications for fireworks permits at Carper Winery or Vineyard and Winery, 4603 Dakota Street, Norwalk; and E, approve Class C retail alcohol license for Spectrum catering concessions and events at 1207 County Road, G-50, St. Charles. Do I have a motion on the claims? Or, excuse me, the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two are our claims. We have a claims figure in the amount of $547,834.73. We have a motion on the claims.
Make a motion on the claims to approve.
Second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number three on our agenda is consider support for state recreational trail grant with possible action.
Morning, Zach.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me on the agenda, and thanks for working with me on that, Michaela. I appreciate your help. So, I have been to two Board of Supervisor work sessions to provide information on the Warren County Conservation Board's grant application to the State Recs Trail Grant, which is due July 1, 2025. Does the Board of Supervisors want any additional information before I make my request?
Good? I think everything was pretty clear in our work session.
All right. Thank you. So, the first official request is for the Board of Supervisors to consider a resolution to cover the upfront costs for the State Recs Trail Grant and then be reimbursed by the grant award and our matching funds if the Conservation Board has awarded the grant. Request number two for this agenda item is to consider helping the County Conservation Board and our partners by covering up to $85,000 of the matching funds required for the grant application. Does anybody want a financial summary for why I'm making that request?
I don't think we do, but the public could have it or use it.
Absolutely. So, our State Rec Trails Grant application, the remaining costs are $778,000. We are required to have 25% of that total cost in hand to cover as match to be able to apply, which is a total of $194,500. We have partners with our Friends of Warren County Conservation Board coming to the table with $25,000 of match. My request from the supervisors that $85,000 of match results in the Conservation Board putting in a dollar-for-dollar match. So, we're doing equal distributions. But our partnership actually allows us to apply to this grant at a 30% match instead of a 25% match, which will increase our score within the criteria of the grant application. Does that suffice for the board?
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for support for the State Recreational Trail Grant.
Second.
Did you want to include amounts or anything?
Oh.
I can repeat those if you'd like.
Yeah, would you repeat those for me?
You bet. So, the first request is to consider a resolution to cover the upfront costs for $778,000 and then be reimbursed by the grant award and our matching funds if we get the grant.
Okay. I'll make a motion for support for $778,000 for the recreational trail grant.
And I'll make a second. Any discussion from the board?
Just for the public's awareness, the grant itself is $535,000 if awarded. Is that correct?
I will double-check those numbers here for you real quickly.
So, essentially, what would be happening would be the county would be, if successful, the county would be fronting the money for the improvements on the trail and then be reimbursed from the grant proceeds.
Yep. For the public's awareness, if we are awarded the grant, it's $583,000 for reimbursement, which is approximately a 650% return on investment.
And the other additional, the difference between the $778 and that figure is split between Friends of Conservation and then a contribution from the supervisors or from the county of up to $85,000.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Just wanted to make everyone clear. It's a big number, and I don't want people to say, "Oh, jeez, how did we come up with that?"
And I'm always happy to take questions if anybody wants to contact me.
Sure.
Okay. So, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any additional discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
The second consideration for a resolution is to cover the assistance with our matching funds of $85,000, which is that one-to-one ratio. Within that request, do you guys want to amend that initial resolution, or do you prefer to have a second resolution, up to $85,000?
A second one's fine.
Okay. So, that, to reiterate that request, consider covering up to $85,000 of the matching funds for their project if the Conservation Board has awarded the grant.
Great.
I'll make that motion. Excuse me.
Second. Any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Thank you for your support. I'll stay here for the fourth agenda item in case you guys have questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work on that, Zach.
And fingers crossed that we get it. All right. Number four on the agenda is consider fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 intra-fund operating transfers for Conservation Department with possible action.
So, the transfer for fiscal year '25 is what we'll actually want to do an official resolution on. The second transfer we'll do in the next fiscal year, and that's that $85,000 that he was discussing. And then 27,000 of that approximately, based on where their budget ends this year, would be a for-sure transfer, and then the rest would be contingent on that State Trails Grant. But for the resolution for this current fiscal year, it's $50,000. It is a budgeted transfer. That would be from the General Fund to the Conservation Reserve Fund, and I can read the resolution for you if that's helpful. So, be it resolved, $50,000 is hereby authorized to be transferred from the General Fund to the Conservation Reserve Fund, Fund 18, for fiscal year 2024, '25. And this, again, is rollover funds, funds they didn't spend last year. That will be getting transferred into their reserve fund per an agreement with the board.
Do we have a motion or questions for?
Make a motion for the FY '25 and '26 inter-fund operating transfers. Wait, that's the wrong one. Take that back.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Thank you.
Second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Number four on our agenda is public hearing for Webb's RV Park LLC for a rezoning of lands owned by Dale and Linda Webb from A-1 Agricultural District to C-2 General Commercial Highway Service District. Good morning, Becky. At this time, I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. We are in public hearing. Good morning, Becky.
Good morning. Webb's RV Park LLC, owned by Dale and Linda Webb, would like to rezone a parcel of land they own from A-1 Agricultural District to C-2 General Commercial Highway Service District. They would like to put an RV park of 15 to 20 spots with full hookups, along with a small building for a bathroom on the parcel east of their home. I spoke with Tyler Teal in the Environmental Health Office regarding the septic. He informed me that Warren County can permit for septic up to 15 RV spots, but any more than 15 would need to go through the DNR. I spoke with Tim Hill, the county engineer. He said there were no issues with the road. Currently, we do not require traffic studies in Warren County. I touched base with the city of Milo, and they had a city council meeting on Monday, May 5, and had no concerns. I did hear from several of the neighbors. I spoke with Amy Welch at 17998 G-58 Highway, Milo, Iowa 50166. She was asking questions about the septic, if there would be a 55 age limit, if they are rezoned commercial, can any kind of business come to the property in the future. She has concerns about noise, loitering, and lowering the value of homes in the area. I spoke with Kelly Henderson at 18109 G-58 Highway, Milo, Iowa 50166. She requested the application on file and mentioned concerns of this rezoning lowering the neighbors' property values. We received a letter from Paul and Nancy Klein Dykstra at 18206 G-58 Highway, Milo, Iowa 50166. All neighbors have expressed the same concerns with property values decreasing, noise levels, increased traffic, and the need for additional law enforcement and security. I spoke with Amy Welch and Kelly Henderson again last week, and they are both concerned of the RV park expanding into more than what is being presented today. I printed off a map of the three parcels that are owned by Dale and Linda Webb, so I wanted to pass that out to you.
We got them. There are a packet.
This is a map showing the three that they own. It's highlighted. I don't know if you can kind of tell, or this kind of highlights it so you can see.
Okay.
Thank you. We had a zoning hearing on May 13. They were, there were three different neighbors that spoke against the rezoning. The zoning commission had three out of five members present that evening. All three voted to recommend denial of the rezoning application. The zoning office asked that you take in all the facts being presented today. We would recommend that restrictions be put in place if there is an approval. Are there any questions?
How did we come to the conclusion that we should go to C-2 on this?
Because it would be, Dawn could maybe help me on this, too. It would be a commercial business because he would be renting it out to neighbors, or, I'm sorry, not neighbors, to people that are snowbirds and things like that, is what he presented that night. So, it would be a commercial business in that aspect.
Okay. I guess I heard on the meeting, I listened to the audio, and I heard friends and family to begin with, and then it kind of went from friends and family to more of a commercial application and then back to friends and family.
The application presented that he would be out to, the friends and family kind of came later during the hearing.
So, I have a question on the agricultural zoning special use permits. A private campground or a camper, trailer parks would be permitted with a special use permit?
Yes.
I have the same question. Why are we, how does the commercial aspect come into play? Because it could be allowed under a special use.
It could. That is something that Lindsay, when she was here, had, chose to go that route. So, I really can't answer as far as why we're going that route.
I didn't know if that came about from a conversation they had with your office, or they just applied on their own.
It was, I believe it was a conversation with their office. Dale and Linda came in and met with Lindsay, and that's the route she wanted to take with it.
Okay.
And then, are we looking at the parcel with the pond?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I assumed. Thank you.
So, in the application, how many spots, RV spots, were proposed in the application?
They proposed 14 to 15 spots on the application.
With all of those spots?
Actually, I'm sorry. They proposed 15 to 20 spots on the actual application and then changed it at the hearing to 14.
That keeps it on at the DNR requirement. Would those 14 proposed spots all be on the parcel ending in 617?
Yes.
With nothing on 670?
It's the one ending in 671.
Sorry, 671 with the pond, but nothing on the other two parcels?
He did not propose that.
I think I'd like to hear from Mr. Webb as well, too.
Okay.
I believe he's here.
Okay. Thank you. We are in public hearing, so anyone is welcome to speak on this matter. Please do come up, state your name and your address, and then the floor will be yours.
Morning.
Good morning.
Robert Stivison, 1005 Highway 5, Carlisle, Iowa. I'm an attorney in Carlisle, representing the proponents of this rezoning. I do have some handouts. If I, how do I do that? Just, I can do it. I understand there's a limit, so I'll try to not be my regular self and talk a lot. First of all, for sure, it is, we are proposing 14 units as opposed to the 15 to 20 that was originally discussed at the zoning board. Number two, we are not intending to put in a bath house or anything of that nature. It's just going to be the pads that would allow the vehicles to be on the pads. Excuse me. The friends and family that you heard related to, at the zoning board, I think in reviewing it, I think, I've told the webs that I believe without a rezoning and without it being commercial, that's the key here, without it being commercial, they would probably have the right to have as many friends and family as they want to come at any time. That's not what they want to do. They want to do it the right way, and they want to be able to have a commercial operation. They've had a commercial operation in the past that has never had any zoning issues or any problems with the county. Some of the board probably are familiar with their previous campground since it's been sold, and it's near, it's between Carlisle and Hartford, or Hartford and Pleasantville, excuse me. The packets that you have today are several things. One are some letters of support from the VFW. Many of the gentlemen are here. There is a petition that are all indicating they are in favor of this. Dale would be allowing veterans and their families to be there. He's not trying to make amends here. He's trying to really provide, I would consider it, partially a service for his family, partially a service for the veterans, and partially get money. That's why it's called a commercial. The pictures, just so the board can kind of get an idea of the area, it's obviously rural, we'll start with that, and there isn't any question, there are other homes in the area. They were at the zoning board. They expressed their opinion that they're not in favor of it. This, these pictures kind of show what you can see from, what the proposed trailer park or RV park would be and what you can see. You can't see any of the other homes. That doesn't mean the homes, as they're...
It's fine.
I'm sorry.
You can keep going.
The homes themselves are not going to be able to see it when they drive by, or I don't know if they go for walks or whatever the case may be. But, so, they are not going to be visually having to, oh, look at all those RVs over there or anything like that. Whenever you get into rezoning, and I represent nine or 10 cities, so I actually deal with this sitting up there instead of standing here, there's always going to be that concern when you start rezoning anything. Well, that's going to affect our property values. That's going to, the one I usually hear more than anything is unfortunately, well, if you rezone this with all this additional traffic, there's going to be a child killed someday. I've heard that in, I represent Pella, Knoxville, many cities. Whenever you get into a city zoning, that's what you hear. That's not the case here. It's a rural area. Mostly, you're going to be having more people probably on the weekends than you're going to have, like lifelong residents pulling their RVs in there and staying there for months at a time. You're going to have, you've got a pond there for fishing. The veterans can go out there if they choose to. They'll be able to fish. They'll be able to camp out. They'll be able to tell their war stories, which I've heard plenty of them from, I'm a veteran also, so I've heard plenty of them. But, we're not trying to ruin the neighborhood. We feel that it'll be a good improvement in the area, and again, it is a rural area. I believe that's kind of, you've got a picture of it already, but if there's questions, Dale and Linda are here. If there's very specific questions, non-legal, I would ask them to address you, but if there's any questions that I can answer for you, I would be happy to do so.
What would be the maximum length of stay that a visitor could stay there? Is there going to be, like, they can stay two weeks, three months, a year?
It's a commercial park. We wouldn't be able to say, "Get out."
Yeah.
We're not, normally, we wouldn't be looking at lease agreements. In their old park, there were lease agreements. I don't think we'd be looking at that nature here, but I'm not going to tell you that you're not going to have somebody there longer than, I think you used the term, a week, or three days, or a week, or a month. I think that's, I'm not going to say that's not a possibility, because that wouldn't be true, because I don't know.
Sure. Sure. Absolutely. And it's kind of a trend right now to live in an RV and travel around the country, so...
It happens.
Yeah, it does.
Wouldn't be my cup of tea, but...
Mine neither.
But I do know a lot of people do it, and I've been inside them. They're pretty nice.
Very nice.
I don't think I have any questions for the attorney at this point. I would make a point, though, that there is a distinction between friends and family and commercial, and that is, I agree with your assessment. Certainly would be able to have friends or family members camp out there. It's a role, there's no restrictions upon that whatsoever. But the difference would be the ability to charge for that. Once you're operating a business, then it would need to be rezoned into a commercial entity, otherwise...
And that's why we're here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your time.
I will add, since I haven't been able to talk to my colleagues, jetted off to vacation last week after our meeting, but I did get a call from Diane, the mayor of Milo. We had a very long conversation, and she as well expressed that they have no concerns with this and would like us to move forward with it if we are satisfied. So, just wanted to share that.
Okay. Anyone from the public or the webs, whoever would like to go, the floor is I just ask that you come up, say your name and address, and if you go over a little on time, that's fine, too. We've got time.
James Henderson, 18109 Highway G-58, Milo. We own the property immediately to the west of the webs. As you could about imagine, our biggest concern is, you know, the rezoning of commercial. We do believe, and I done, I didn't, I don't have anything to hand out to you, but I've read some articles online about RV parks going in, and there is a history of property being devalueized because of these RV parks going next to people's homes. I think it is an eyesore, and if we or any of our neighbors decide to sell our property, I think it would be a hard selling point, knowing that there's an RV park with an eye shot. We can see the hillside where some of those RVs will be at from our view, from our house, and I'm not sure about the angle of anybody else's house. I just can tell you where we live at, and I can see the hillside and where that pond is at. That pond did grow over the winter. When he purchased the property in August last year, he immediately started doing dirtwork and started excavating and preparing for this right away. Built a pond to make it bigger, and then in the spring, he, I don't know if they used it back or what, they dug out the old dam to extend that pond, and so there's, anyway, it's just kind of lay out of the pond. It just kind, I don't know the image that you have, but it's probably different from that that you ever received. As far as the city of Milo is concerned, none of us knew it went to city council that it was discussed. We had no idea. I don't know if they really took a hard step of that, stepped back and looked at what the impact would be on it. As far as the, oh, everybody signing the petition at the Milo Meat Locker, to me, I don't care if there's five signatures on there or four hundred signatures. They're not in that immediate area. They don't live right there where that use, where that land or the RVs park's going to be at. They're just concerned about maybe a handful of people coming in, using the locker or the bar or Casey's to get more Baron hot dog buns. The economic development that they're looking at, I've been in banking for over 30 years, over 35 years, actually, and I've dealt with businesses for, for better part of 20 years. Not all, like, I'm not a lender, but I could tell you from a deposit side and working closely with lenders, not all business is good business. We turned away deposit accounts. We turned away loans because of the type of business establishment they are. You know, not everybody wants that type of business around. I don't know how much of an impact it'll have on the local economy, other than like, you know, the three establishments in Milo that I mentioned, but once they, what I believe is, once they determine that they can go to Walmart and hear nothing at all, and prices are a lot cheaper than Casey's has offered, they'll be going there to pick up their supplies. But, again, that's just my opinion. And like I mentioned earlier, with the petition, it has, to me, it really has no merit. No one's going to see that. We are concerned about the traffic and the safety of people, more cars pulling in and all that. As I stated in the zoning committee, there is a hill to the east as you go uphill or downhill going into Milo, and they come from the other direction. downhill going into Milo, and they come from the other direction, and there is a hill and a curve there. I get that they're not going to be pulling in and out of there every weekend, but when they are, kids go to school, people drive by pretty fast on more cycles, and, or just kids going to athletic events or school. That entrance to the RV park is about halfway up that hill. Someone's coming out of Milo, flying out of town. I think that could pose a potential hazard. The, as far as the webs, previous establishment up by Hartford, I did reach out to Warren County Sheriff before the zoning committee and asked, you know, just curious what kind of calls are out there, that they've received out there. Over a six-year span, actually about five and a half-year span, fifty-seven calls were out there, made out there, and they range from civil issues to burglary, theft. I'm not going to read everything, but harassment, fraudulent activity, criminal mischief, robbery. It's just, it kind of goes on and on. So, we're concerned about the safe, you know, integrity of our neighborhood and the houses that surround that RV park. Once that, if that RV park goes commercial, and even if it doesn't, regardless, if there's RVs there, who's vetting this after the fact that, who these individuals are, you know? Once they get out there, there's no policing of what activity is going on, who's going on out there, unless us neighbors call in all the time to express that concern. Forty-five spots, or excuse me, fourteen spots that started out the application, you know, fifteen to twenty spots, who's to say that he grows this? Because from my understanding, up in Hartford, it started out at about forty-five spots or so, and then it grew to over a hundred. Who's to say that this ain't going to happen here, too? There's, it's tied out there, but if he is determined to get it done, I believe that he would find a way to get it done. And I understand that there's a hundred-and-eighty-day rule, too, for those RVs. How's that going to be policed, too? Who's going to monitor that? They said in a zoning meeting that it'd be from April to October. Again, who's going to monitor that? That's what they say, but someone could, their last establishment's had aluminum skirts around it, and they were set up permanently in that RV park. Again, you know, what, who's to say that's not going to happen after the fact? I don't want to be one of those guys that have Warren County Sheriff's Department on speed dial and constantly complain that all this is going on out there. To me, it shouldn't be on us, but if it's zoned commercially, I think it'll open up Pandora's box. But if this is approved, how will the county plan to manage someone to the rules and laws prevent the proven to the manageable in the exact same capacity? If it doesn't feel like a burden beyond the neighbors to identify and report these concerns?
Got it. Just, I know my time's kind of up, but...
It is. Thank you, sir.
All right. I got it.
I have a question, I guess, for us up at the table. So, I know the concern is who's going to manage it. I'm sorry, I should have let you come up first, but just as we're talking about it, I would assume that if he went over fourteen, that could pull in the DNR, am I correct? DNR has a lot more regulations than we do in unincorporated areas.
Yeah.
It's higher than, I thought it was fifteen. Is that what Tyler said? I think that's what's in the application, that once they go over fifteen...
Said fifteen.
That DNR is involved.
Yeah.
Come on up.
So, along with that, I have a question. My name is Kelly Henderson. I live at 18109 Highway G58, and James was my husband, so I live directly to the west of this property. So, when talking about the fifteen for the septic piece, is it at fifteen it has to go to DNR, or if it's over fifteen? Because that's kind of gray to me and how this has been mentioned here.
Looks like in the application, it says Tyler says Warren County can permit to a maximum of fifteen sites. Anything more will require permitting through the DNR.
Okay, so, once you hit sixteen. So, they had applied for fifteen to twenty spots, and I'm sure that staying within that threshold is why they went to the fourteen, but I'm like, why fourteen unless that fifteen was kind of a wild card? But with everything that they have applied for, it seems to be that whoever they speak with, they tailor their answer to what that particular audience wants to hear. So, they applied for fifteen spots, and the zoning meeting, it's, oh, we're only going to do fourteen. We, they applied for a small bathroom building, oh, we probably won't even need that because they're all going to be self-sufficient sites. However, the fourteen, ding ding, if you have fourteen spots, that fifteenth spot could be a bathroom. So, what they say and what ends up being done consistently from their own patterns of behavior, I just don't trust it. The April, the October not being open in the winter, what holds them to this schedule, as my husband said? This was not applied for, they're not going to necessarily be held to that. And one of our neighbors had specifically, as Becky mentioned, asked if this was going to be a senior campground. Well, once that idea was specifically mentioned to him, well, now it's for seniors, it's for snowbirds, it's for our family and friends. And so, what they applied for, as we went through the last meeting, the zoning meeting, it went from snowbirds, friends and family, specific quotes where it's not meant for kids, there's not going to be a playground, we want adults who will be monthly renters, then to just mention friends and family, it's meant for personal, it's not a hundred percent open to the public. And then by the end, it was, this is just for my family, and you can't keep me from doing on my own property and doing this for my family. Well, if you're wanting to run it as a business, I do think that there's regulation for that. And as far as the petition, this was a petition that they put out, it's branded with their name and address, Webbs RV LLC at the top of it, with their address, and it has a specific reference to family. Lynda and Dale Webb of Webb RV Park is looking to bring a family-friendly fourteen-site full hookup campground to Milo. They're located out on G58 Highway. They're building a family fun for catch and release, fishing, camping, and memories to be made with family and friends. And then it just references that they've been in business and a previous experience for forty years, and that there is a hearing today. But what they say is just constantly evolving. And as neighbors who have general concerns from this just automatically bringing, being brought up, seeing these things constantly evolving, I'm sure if it was going in your backyard, next to your family, next to your children, that you would have, you would understand these concerns. And today, it's for his veteran friends. And I'm not saying that in a negative capacity, so don't misunderstand me. I have a lot of family members, my son is in the military. I fully respect the military, but it just goes to how this is constantly evolving. And I know that you have had the meeting minutes, I know that you have the recordings, so these are all things that you could have witnessed on your own as you went through, and I would, I would think that this would stand out to all of you. You know, you mentioned no...
Ms. Henderson?
Yeah.
I'll wrap it up.
Sure. No mention of any restrictions on campers, and in the last meeting, it was, you know, five years or newer. So, someone has a five-year-old camper, and that's okay this year, but you're not going to let him come back next year. So, we have big concerns about safety and the type of people that this would bring, what type of vetting. My husband went through the police calls, yes, they are real, yes, that came through the Freedom of Information Act from our local law enforcement. So, the traffic, if you are, if you have not landed on how you want to vote for this, I think you should come out and look at the property. I think you should look at that entrance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm giving it, just so the public knows, I'm giving a little more deference and grace to the Hendersons, the Mealy's, and the Gilmonds if they're in here. Otherwise, it's three minutes for public comment, but... And the webs.
And the surrounding properties.
Yeah, surrounding properties, if you live real close to it, and you go a little bit over three minutes, I'm not, I'm not going to be a stickler on three minutes, and it's a hard stop, but, three minutes.
I'm anxiety really bad, sorry.
It's okay.
Kelly's just going to stand here for me. I'm Stephanie Gavin on the Assistant's Office, it's Stephanie Mealy. I live at 18447 G58 Highway. I'm east of the webs. I did email you guys my letter to just kind of help for what you probably not or can't understand me as I talk, but my biggest concerns is where they chose to put their site. When you look, not on that one, but when you look on the one that's a little more clear as to where the properties divide, my property starts from that line, and then it tees kind of over. So, he's, they're putting the site, they've already started. I do have a few pictures, like I said, I put my letter. But the site literally starts and makes an L shape right at the front, so that like gray or like the tan driveway you see is now actually gravelled, and that is where there's, that's where the sites are. So, that property line, I have said before that I have a path that goes around my field that we walk, my kids and I walk, and it's just, it's very close, but I'll get back to my notes, sorry, I'm getting very... So, as I said before, my biggest concerns is already the trespassing that he has done. It started off when they first were placing the property pins, the orange posts. And the fact that he mowed my section without asking, that to me was kind of a red flag, but I was like, okay, you know, I'll let it go. Just the issues of when he did start making all the dirt work and changing things, the dumping items onto my property. I did just get some more pictures today, but I didn't get them that show all sorts of tracks on that back chunk, where you can see that line on the back half, there's a small like bridge that you can take certain things across, and all that back half has now has equipment markings from when things were getting dumped without my permission and moved without my permission. Some of the other times he's trespassed is even when my daughter had been out walking with an adult, just coming across, not even asking. Some of the other issues I've had is, I understand when you're doing new things, you have to trench, you have to lay lines, and I understand, I'm a very easygoing type of person, it's just, I've always been respectful of other people, and I believe that when you're doing stuff, you should have the respect to communicate what you're doing before you just do it, especially when I don't know you, you just moved in. Your words to me when you first moved in was you're a nature person, you're not going to really change anything, you want, you're going to do this, this, and this, and then shortly after, it's like, okay, I can tell you're making a bigger pond, I can tell you're doing certain things. So, a lot of it is just, a lot of it's the disrespect, it's the, I don't trust him, I don't trust anything he does. A lot of the other issue is learning now that, yes, like Kelly had made a statement about the snowbirds, and now they're veterans. Because of how my land is, I have the ability to go out and shoot guns in target practice with my boys and my daughters, and is that going to affect them? I'm a nurse, so I understand PTSD, and I'm not saying I don't know their conditions, I'm just saying that I have been, I have, my son's in the Army, and I understand how things go, I understand mental health. And now knowing that, it's like, okay, am I going to have to alter my life once again to try to be understanding of people that are visitors? I don't quite have a fence put up quite yet to divide, but my other concern is the trash that it'll bring in. I currently have deer and pheasants that roam that property, and it's just, it's all to me about the safety, having not many people, the ability to have fourteen campers, not having a limit on how many people that could be in that camper, their animals, everything along with it. I, I'm not a very social person, I try to keep to myself, and so that is a little bothersome because, like I said, as I try to walk my property, I'm not going to have that peace and quiet now. I'm not going to have that relaxation that I should be able to come home and try to unwind from being the atmosphere of work that I choose. And...
Ms. Mealy, I don't want to, I don't mean to cut you off, but I got to cut you off, okay? You got to keep moving.
Yep. So, my concern is estimation-wise, from where he plans on putting the first campsites that he shows, and my house is about three hundred and fifty feet. To me, that is very, very close. My son plays on the side of the house that's fenced in, how am I know they're not going to watch him? I know they had made a comment that you cannot see, you can see from my kitchen window. When I'm doing dishes, I now will have to look at these campers. They may not be ground level, but when they get out there, you can see it.
Thank you.
I just want to wrap up, and you guys are welcome to come out and look. I will gladly let you see from my...
See your pictures as well, too.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm starting to shake. But that's the trail.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your coming. Anyone else, please step forward. Name an address, please.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Klein Dykstra, my address is 18206 G58 Highway. I take issue with Mr. Webb's lawyer. I can see that proposed RV park from my property. I live directly across the highway. I want to speak today on the peace and quiet of the country life. After leaving the peace and quiet of the farm life for almost fifty years, we looked for a quiet place in the country. We did not look to the busy towns or cities. We did not choose to be by a town park, we wanted the peace and quiet of the country. And where this location is zoned agriculture, it's really actually very residential, and it's very quiet and peaceful out there. Last week, while I was outside of my home, I could hear the webs visiting with their company on their deck, and I thought to myself, now... And I thought to myself, now add 28 more voices with 14 mobile homes or RV park. It's going to get loud. And now my peace and quiet has been shattered. I would think that an RV park would be better suited for a more rural area where there are not close neighbors by. So as that you cannot disturb your neighbors. I can guarantee you that three years ago, when we looked at this property and we purchased it, that we would not have even taken a second look had there already been an existing RV park there because it wouldn't have been what we wanted in our backyard. So I do truly think that when it's time for us to sell and move on with our life, our property value is really going to go down. And it might even be extremely hard to find a buyer. I guess that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Paul Dykstra, 18206 G-58 Highway. As my wife expressed, and I would like to reiterate that the value of our property is going to be greatly diminished. In talking to others that have, that we've considered, you know, and asked them, what do you think would happen here? And they, they all admit the property values would go down. Veterans that are here, I respect you. I've got daughters in the military. I've got a grandson that's in basic. If you want to go fishing out there, that's fine. He can let you go to the pond and go fishing. But to put 14 mobile homes, RVs, whatever you want to call them, and say, well, they're just going to be there on weekends, this is the problem that we have. The story changes every time. They're all going to be in bed by nine o'clock. Anybody been to an RV center? Anybody go to bed at nine o'clock? Now they got their campfires, they're drinking beer, singing songs, doing whatever. They're not going to bed at nine o'clock. If they were, who's, if they're not, who's going to enforce it? Going to have law enforcement set up a station out there? It's just ridiculous. You have all received something from me, I believe, an email about the codes within the county and what it allows. And no disrespect again to anybody here, but if I was moving to a community, which it is, a community of homes out there, if I was moving to a community and going to build an RV park, don't you think you want to put the cart before the horse? He's been building, investing money in it and now, oh, I got all this money invested and now I got to do it. Got to do it. Why don't I just move to Milo and build a hog confinement? And not ask and not get the permission, not go through the regulations? That's 1,750 feet I got to stay away from neighbors. I could probably figure out how to get that done, but I wouldn't do that to a community of homes. And now what he's proposing is an RV park. And none of the regulations have been followed in the past. They've all been broken. You had law enforcement out in his old one. If, if, if it was that good, why didn't he stay there instead of coming in to destroy a community? He never became part of the community. He didn't talk to his neighbors first. He didn't go to the zoning board first. And now here we end up. Why are we here? Because he didn't do due diligence and he put the cart before the horse. And I know after this committee and after this meeting, we're going to have another meeting. It's going to move on. But for him to either keep it agriculture and put a park in or to, to zone it commercial, put a park in, it seems to be all about him and not about anybody else. There are plenty of places to park and everybody that signed a petition, I don't care if the whole town of Indianapolis signed a petition. Go into town and tear down your city park and put an RV park there. Nobody would want it. There's nobody that signed a petition that would want that RV park in their front yard. I've planted better than 60 trees already this year to block the view and to hold the noise down because I know what's coming if he could, if he can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else?
My name is Amy Welch. I live at 17998 Highway G-58. I would like to just ask if this is, happens, if there will be any covenants or restrictions that will be in place to ensure public health and the safety of our morals and general welfare and to conserve and protect our property and property values. And as you can tell, I'm breathing. I can't handle a lot of smoke, so you know, I don't know what that's going to do. But anyway, my, my husband and I, as neighbors, would like to see if it happens, a high wooden fence, especially on, on the adjacent properties, uh, lines, no fires, a noise ordinance, an age limit of the occupants and their campers and the respect of the privacy of the country neighbors who live there for our privacy. Joe and I feel violated that the webs didn't, um, reach out to contact us to let us know what would be coming. It came as a big surprise. And like I said, I do feel violated. And this is not a personal vendetta against the webs. I welcomed them when they moved in and they appeared to be good peoples and I'd hope to become friends. But at this point, I feel my life has been violated. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joe Welch, 17998 Highway G-58, Milo, Iowa. I was a professional truck driver for UPS. I worked for them for over 30 years. And one of the things they, uh, push is safety. I have a camper. I do go camping. When I pull out my driveway, I have to take very, very careful what I'm doing because I see the traffic come through my place and it is concerning to me when I pull out. I know a lot of other drivers are not as good as professional drivers. Even some professional drivers are not good. They don't really obey a lot of things. And I have not, I have a clean record with UPS. So I know what I'm talking about, about safety. Now, another thing about real estate, location, location, location. You put a house somewhere next to somewhere, that draws the value down. You're not going to put $100,000 net, uh, uh, million dollar home next to, uh, cars, uh, factories, uh, higher, high, uh, crime rate areas because you know that hundred million dollar home is not going to be its worth. So as the value of our homes go down, I hope the assessors also brings our property taxes down because I do not want to pay high taxes on a worthless home. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Stout, 1566 180th. I'm also a veteran. I've got to get to an appointment, so I'll make this quick. I don't want to disparage or talk bad about anybody or tell anybody they can't put something where they want to put it on their own property. But when it comes to putting something like that into a neighborhood, that changes the whole complexity of the situation. So I appreciate what they're trying to do. I appreciate if they're trying to reach out to vets, that's great. But as far as changing it to a commercial property, I think that's going to change the whole neighborhood, the whole complexity of our situation. So, you know, it's what it is. I appreciate your time and I got to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, JD Good, 17740 G-58 Highway. I'm just west of them. Uh, went and talked to them for about an hour the other day. Uh, seemed like very nice people. One major concern with a lot of the people in Milo that I've talked with, uh, there's a rumor, I have no facts to back this up. There's a rumor going around town of sexual offenders having long-term residency at the Hartford Park. They denied this. I expressed my concerns because we're a half mile from our elementary. We've got kids up and down this whole highway. They informed me that they would not allow sexual offenders onsite or whatever. Uh, I want to know, is there a way that we can have something in effect to confirm this? You know what I mean? The other piece of it, uh, was with the, uh, long-term rentals. When I talked to them, they said they are going to be open April to October. They would allow long-term stays. If you purchase the whole summer package, you could actually leave your camper there 12 months a year. Can't stay in it from October to April, but it could stay onsite. That's a couple of other things to factor. I think they have a great vision for it. They seem like great people. I've just had those two concerns with it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Erica Arias. I live at 15962 180th Avenue. My one main concern, you know, with the other neighbors is the property value. Another concern of mine would be the safety. Like it's mentioned before, there's a lot of small children. There's a school down the road along with the daycare. We have high school students driving up that highway. You know, when they're going to sports events, when they're going to school, maybe picking up siblings. It is not a very monitored highway. There are also a lot of blind spots, um, including where I'm currently at in the corner of 180th and G-58. There's a blind spot. There's been several accidents there. There used to be signs that said to slow the traffic down, but, um, ever since those have been take, um, not taken down, but there's been accidents, so they've been, um, broken down. So that is just one of my main concerns with an RV park. You don't know what kind of people will be coming in. Mr. Webb has said it's going to be for friends and family, um, now veterans. We don't know that that's 100 going to be, you know, 100% sure because there's nobody that's going to be monitoring what kind of people will be coming into the, into the RV park. So my main concern is, I have small children. I have a teenager who's driving, so I just want you guys to take all of that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Dar, I'm with, representing the VFW. My address is 19174 Cleveland Place, Carlisle. Mr. Webb said something to me two or three months ago about if he put in another RV park, he would put in a Wounded Warriors memorial. He has guaranteed that's going to happen. I've talked to the construction guy who was here. It's all been donated for the Wounded Warriors. I am a wounded warrior. And this is a big deal for people to come and have a place to go to and sit around, as was said earlier. I had a deployment too in Vietnam and as the other six people that are back there. I've been out there. I don't see what the thing is. I've been affiliated with other, one other thing with the Cuddy's Campground. They have 767 sites there. They have, the property values have went through the roof out there. They're so valuable, the land is so valuable, it's unbelievable. There's one access, period. And this is way more accessible, way, way, there's no comparison. But as far as the veterans, we have contacted, we will do the dedication for the memorial or provide stuff for the veterans so they can feel comfortable and be at home. Mr. Webb has assured us that he provides sites for them free of charge. So that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Katie Stout. I live at 15626 180th Avenue in Milo. And I, I also am opposed to the RV park. I love camping, but it has to be at the appropriate time, the appropriate place. Uh, my husband and I, he spoke previously. We enjoy taking our horses and going down to Elk Rock and we probably should go elsewhere, but I'm not quite brave enough on some of those trails, so. But, and I also want to bring up, um, we've had some veterans talk here and I know that we have that, many veterans in the room. I thank every single one of them for their service. And I, I hate to speak out against any single one of them, but in order to benefit some veterans, you're also going to disparage and you're going to, you're going to lessen the quality of life for others. My husband, he was so upset to find out that there was an RV park coming in. And he's also a disabled veteran. This is something that's going to, it's going to alter his life. It may, it may cause us to find a different place to live. We have many veteran mothers, veteran fathers. My own father-in-law loves coming out because it's peaceful and it's quiet. And I, I would request that this be turned down. I hope that the webs can find a more appropriate piece of land. Again, location, location, location. Find a better piece of land where you can better enjoy it. It can be a benefit to the community that you take it into. And that's all that I have to say now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Mr. or Ms.?
Mike Kellum, 1679 140th Avenue in Carlisle. I've known Dale Webb and Linda Webb for over 40 years. To say he's not trustworthy or honest, he is. I've known him. When he first bought that property, it was, I didn't even know there was a pond there. He's went in and he moved a lot of stuff around. He's done a lot of upgrades and stuff like that. From, there, there is a lot of what ifs. What if people aren't, if they pull out and they're not obeying the traffic laws? We don't, that's not their thing or, or, or the property values. We don't know. It could go up, could go down. We don't know. There's a lot of what ifs, but, uh, as far as the veterans thing, they're saying, well, it was just brought up. No one was brought up when he first bought it. He, he asked me about putting it down there to put like a concrete pad with a, a curb so that they were in a wheelchair, they couldn't, they could sit there and fish and not fall into the pond. But, um, he has done a lot of upgrades out there. It's like the people there, you know, it's, I don't, I don't think it's going to be permanent sites. It, it does say 180 days. And as far as the, the, uh, septic permit, 15 or less is county, 15 or more is DNR. So if he stays at 15 or less, it's under a county permit. But as far as being honest and trustworthy, I can say I've known him for 40 years. That's not a true statement. He is, in my opinion, a great man and he's not trying to hurt anybody. He's not. So I don't, if you have any questions, I'll answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? I would like to hear from the property owners at some point as well, but anyone else from the public? Anyone online? Registering to talk or no? Last call from the public. Mr. or Mrs. Webb, would you like to address anything or take questions? All right, with that, I will make a motion to end our public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have ended our public portion of the hearing, uh, board discussion.
I'll go ahead and start. I believe, um, I did drive by the property yesterday and took a look and see what was going on just from the street. I do have a big problem with the rezoning to C-2. I just want to make it clear for the other board members that we are not approving a campground today. We are approving a zoning change to commercial C-2, which would allow any use in our zoning ordinance under a C-2. So that means any kind of commercial property, not just a campground. So it's not really just approval for a campground is approval to commercial zoning. I do have an issue with the packet itself in that there is not a site plan or a map or any clear description on what's being built there. Um, with that said, um, an approval today would put our county offices and the public at a huge disadvantage because we will never be able to go back. because we will never be able to go back and say that what was built wasn't what was discussed because we actually at this time, it is very unclear to me what exactly is being built there because there's no site plan. There's nothing that shows where the improvements are going, anything of that nature with the packet. Thirdly, this particular use for private campgrounds or a travel trailer park is permitted in agricultural zoning with the benefit of a special use permit. So I'm not really clear why the application was for a change of zoning rather than the special use permit. Because it is actually, would be allowable under a special use permit without the change of zoning to the commercial. And I think because of, um, that would be a better way to go for this property because we don't want to approve in absolute any commercial use that could be placed on this property, in my opinion. And fourthly, um, you know, from my observation, I think a lot of the property has already been built. So um, I think the reality is that it, it is going to be built. I don't think um regardless of whether the zoning is changed or whether the, what the neighbors think, this is a property that uh, um, the, the owners of the property, they have, they have started construction and I believe they intend to see it through. I'm not saying I, you know, approve of that, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a problem that all of this had started and took place without either the special use permit or the change in zoning. So um, for those reasons, um, I don't think I'm in favor of this action to change the zoning to um, commercial C two. I don't think that'd be, you know, fair to the neighbors to allow any type of commercial property to take place at this location.
Thank you, Ray.
If it had a clear site plan and an actual, I had a clear, you know, vision of what was actually being built there and it was an application for a special use permit, I think that's, that's a whole different, that's a whole different issue than what we're dealing with here today.
Brian, I just got a question on that. So if we're looking, let's just, let's take this out, that we're not looking at a rezoning. We're, we're looking at a special use permit because it sounds as though zoning, Lindsay, this was the direction she thought was best. Um, so that's the direction they were guided down. Would you feel more comfortable approving this under a special use permit on drag?
Well, like I said, they don't have a site plan, so I don't really know what's being built there. But I mean, I'd, yes, I'd be a lot more comfortable with a special use permit because there can be um different restrictions and other things that are placed on the property that we don't have with just a simple rezoning.
I would just like to speak on this, especially if you can't remember the term. Um, special use permit, those people who are more adjusted would not come to divorce.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, Don.
So it sounds like, Don, if we were going to be more comfortable with a special use permit, instead of doing a special use permit, we would want to look more at and, and kind of go on a little bit beyond what Brian said. We can put a sunset debt, sunset on this zoning and we can put limitations on the zoning. So we could restrict him to fourteen spots and no more. And if the property were to change hands or at a date to be determined, we could sunset the C two zoning.
You should follow along with the property changing hands.
Okay. I guess I have a little bit of a problem with, from the get-go, kind of followed this a little bit and, and seen it kind of jumped back and forth and, and we've kind of heard some, some sentiment about there's some language that has been used just to satisfy what people want to hear. That's one of my big, big hurdles I've got to get across here. And if we compare his previous property with this property, that property had a lot more open ground, a lot more ag ground around it, not near as many neighbors. Um, and above and beyond that, I do feel like this is just straight-up spot zoning. Um, there's no other C two properties or commercial properties unless you go clear into um just west of Milo and there's a, there's a storage facility basically in a backyard. One of the other issues that I would have would be, we don't have a lot of law enforcement in Milo to begin with. And it's about eight tenths of a mile from Casey's to that driveway. And that's a real straight stretch of road and there could be some serious UTV golf cart vehicle accidents. So safety is a, a huge concern of mine there too.
Thank you, Travis. Anyone else?
I think I'm a little conflicted on this. Um, I feel as though we, we pushed them down this road for the rezoning. They followed the advice we were giving them, right? And now we're sitting up here quite some time later talking about another way to do it. So um, I, I don't know. Kind of at a standstill. I'd like to hear what you two think.
Well, to be quite clear, I did not tell anybody to go anywhere. I'm the final decider.
Someone thought that?
Yeah.
Final decider?
Yeah. Um, well, as far as this is concerned, um, this application, along with my board members. I have had experience with you, Mr. Webb. And for you to come into what I consider my neighborhood, um, I am highly offended that you're coming back. You are the reason I do not have, do not have voicemail on my phone. The messages that you left me took me to my sheriff. I should have pressed charges.
Sorry, Crystal, I didn't know that.
Yes, personally, there's a problem. But as far as the zoning is concerned, I agree with Supervisor Arnold that this is the wrong direction. And I will leave my comments there.
What, what can go, I guess maybe, Don, this is a question for you, but what type of business can go in a C two zoning district?
I can't tell you without being able to.
Okay.
It could be any kind of business. There's always the reasons uh, sometimes the local limit, what could be there and it's some sense.
Okay. My general thoughts, um, I looked at the, the packet. I looked at the zoning commission's checkboxes, uh, looked at the minutes. To with the spot zoning, there's just not commercial around it. And so adding commercial at this location without site plans and without a whole lot more diligence, um, I, I wouldn't be supportive of it at this time. They also, um, I did note that they also recommended denial three zero. Um, I'm not saying that the zoning commission is determinative on how I make decisions. They are not, but I do, um, I do take what they think and what, how, how they process things into consideration. And it's, it's just a lot easier for me to split with them when there's a two-two split or a, you know, a tie or someone wasn't there and it, it maybe comes to us denied, but it's two-two and they didn't have a majority. Um, but at three zero and considering the issue with the potential of spot zoning, I would not be supportive of it. So at this time, Don, do I make a, do we just let it go or do I make a motion to deny the rezone?
Make a motion on what's on the agenda?
Yep. I'll, I'll make a motion to um, deny the rezoning of land from A one to C two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is denied. Number six, discussing, discussion regarding employment in the following offices with possible action. The attorney's office, summer intern. Don, are you presenting that?
You gonna stare me down? Do I need to get the sheriff over here?
Crystal, please stop.
Oh, my gosh. The man is a bully.
Please stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jamie actually only presented this during a work session. What I know about it is we usually have a, a summer intern um, who is usually interested in some area of the practice of law. And I believe that's the person that they're looking at this time, that she does have an interest in the practice of law and it gives them experience and working with other attorneys and also with our support staff. I, did she say how much time?
It was up to two thousand dollars. I'll make a-
And so it's, it's within the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve Attorney's Office Summer Intern up to two thousand dollars as described in the work session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Erickson?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion carries. Thanks, Don. Um, secondary roads motor grader.
Oh, did you get rained out, Tim?
They got rained out.
Doggone it.
She had another game tomorrow, though.
Oh, you had the Indianola game today?
Yeah.
Oh, we got Kid versus Kid.
My daughter's, yeah. Is she in seven? She's in seven. She was going to hit a homerun on your daughter.
We've got a good Indy Norwalk rivalry here.
We did a side bet over here.
Now, now make your request, we'll see how it goes.
We had a motor grader operator resign for other employment, District Seven, just on the east side of Indianola. Obviously, we'd like to refill that position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion from the board. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's not really one of those positions where you can uh just leave a chunk of the county without a motor grader. Um, that's a backfill. That's a, going to be a backfill. Or some sort of a plan that makes sense. All right, number seven is consider ISAC request ninety-nine county tour and plan for Supervisor Erickson. Stephanie Erickson from Indianola to serve as the main point of contact with possible action.
Yay, yay.
Do we need a motion? I'll make a motion to um, put Supervisor Erickson as the main point of contact for the ISAC ninety-nine county tour.
Really, Brian? Because I was going to make the motion for you because you two weren't here. I was going to make it you two.
Your name's on the agendas.
I know, I know. No, actually, I volunteered.
Brian made a motion, I'm going to second that motion. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Uh, number eight, consider maintenance contracts with possible action.
Done the footwork and gathered quite a few uh contract renewals as well as uh new contracts for equipment that has not been maintained by the county. Believe this is the contract for, can you scroll back up to the top, please? Uh, this would be for the administrative building. Uh, so this is a contract renewal. We are under a contract already with Excel Mechanical. Uh, so I've read through this contract and verified all the equipment is correct and everything. And that would be just up to you guys if you want a secondary quote or if you want to continue with uh working with Excel.
Have they been decent to work with in the past? Seem like they're staying on top of stuff and-
Yes, yep, they're very good. We've worked with them for several, several years since I've been here and um-
No issues?
No, no issues at all. Uh, it says plus tax, but it's not included in the quote amount. Uh, but when I get the bill and I do the invoice, I do not see a tax amount, so.
Okay. And is there audit or also supportive of that contract? Are you supportive of the contract as well?
And they know our buildings really well.
Yeah.
So that's good.
There, there was some question. Are we on all the contracts in aggregate or are we just going one by one?
I think we'll probably do one by one. I mean, I'm-
So the first one?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to- Well, I think once we build those relationships and they know our buildings and they know kind of the rigmarole of what they're doing and everybody's happy with them and the price is fair, I'd, you know, I would be in favor of moving forward with this contract then.
Okay. Does the board agree?
Second.
Let's make one motion on it, but unless we need to break them up. Okay. One at a time? One at a time?
I would make a motion to approve the scheduled maintenance agreement with Excel Mechanical for the Warren County Administration Building three oh one, North Buxton.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Um, next contract is scheduled maintenance agreement.
It's be for the West Annex.
For the West Annex.
Yep, and this is another renewal. So we currently use Excel Mechanical for quarterly inspections of the equipment for HVAC over at the West Annex.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Um, snow or lawn care, landscape management and snow removal and ice management agreement. Okay, this one, we, we did have a question.
Yep.
Did we get that sorted out on that parcel number on paragraph two?
Yes. Yep, I was able to see that there was a, a typing mistake in the uh previous parcel lot number and, and made that correction, so.
Great.
So the corrected parcel, is that the parking that we have for the trailers on the Iowa?
No, this is really, it's just a, a corner lot that's tied into some wooded areas that the county owns behind homes.
Okay.
It's honestly a piece of property we need to probably have discussion about in a work session to-
We did a year ago, um, put out to the public that we had this grant available. Um, if the homeowners that are adjacent to those properties was interested, if some of those homeowners are taking like care of some of those trees that are falling off anyway, we contacted the Buddhist temple and there was no response. Um, this corner lot is part of that, but it runs, sorry, in a corner of Iowa, which is a very busy street. It's in its corner maybe that goes that way. And it's important that we keep that mode down just for traffic purposes.
Michaela, is there any way you could bring that up just to show the supervisors? It's a really odd-shaped piece of property and really has no value whatsoever.
Nobody wants it, including us.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, if you go to Beacon.
Indianola wasn't quite big enough back in the day.
It is four eight eight seven zero two.
Oh, I see.
Four zero six four three.
It's the creek. It just runs right along the creek, yeah.
It's in a ditch area.
Nobody wanted that. Nobody wanted that prime real estate.
The parking lot is this part here.
Okay. Someone could really expand their backyard right there.
Well, that's, I mean, are we, have we considered, because I assume that that's not developable or...
No, it's...
Of any use, so have we, we considered possibly vacationing to the homeowners behind or even to the... It's been offered.
Nobody wants it.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Basically be like an alleyway.
What's the... Who owns the...
The Buddhist temple. Well, they started a new city manager.
Two or three people in that area that were taking pieces right behind them, however, we would have to survey each of those pieces. So, one of the things that we...
I got it. Okay.
This was a plan and piece of ground, but they didn't develop and all properties sold. And then whoever didn't pay taxes, most likely developed it, I don't know who it was. Then it comes back to account.
Gotcha. Got it. Okay, clarified.
I had a question about the, um, the other contract, the Norwalk seasonal. It looked like it was only for one address. Is that right? They gave us a quote for just the job address that only lists this building. It doesn't list the other buildings.
Uh, yeah, it's actually, it's for all of the locations. I just, all they had put on there was for that.
Okay.
The billing address or...
Yeah, the billing address, I believe, but...
Yeah, the job address, it just says 301 North Buxton, so that's why it didn't list, like the Gilbert. It didn't list all the locations, so...
Yeah.
I wasn't quite clear what they were actually bidding.
They also put the contract to the city of Indianola instead of Warren County.
I guess just looking through both of them, comparing apples to apples, I feel a lot more comfortable with Gilbert just because his contract clearly states a lot of things that Norwalk doesn't.
Uh, the county drew up the contract that you're looking at there.
Okay.
And that's the current contract as well. Well, it's been revised to his new pricing on his current quote. But I basically just edited the, the terms and, uh, the amounts.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah.
And we have had both, um, operations work and we have been very happy with Gilbert compared to their quality.
Okay.
Yeah, Norwalk seasonal has a stipulation in their agreement that after 32 inches of snowfall that pretty much were out of the agreement, so everything after 32 inches of snowfall is an added price of removal, so...
And that's not a, a thing with Gilbert?
No. Gilbert, there's, there's no stipulation of snowfall or anything like that, and he's agreed to sign the contract that's been revised, so...
Okay. That could be huge in a year like '08.
So what's the difference in the, I'm trying to look at them side by side, what Norwalk seasonal services gave us and then Gilbert?
Uh, there's a price variance. I think, uh, Norwalk seasonal comes in higher than Gilbert.
What are the numbers?
On the back.
I guess that, that's where I'm confused, because it the total monthly payments, like the Norwalk is 1,900. I see a subtotal on all services 23,000, but I think it was Gilbert. I gotta go back. Gilbert contract, it was a little bit more, or quite a bit more. 37,000 versus 23,000.
And that's a pretty big discrepancy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when's the last time we got 37 inches of snow? Well, I say that now.
Thirty-two, yeah.
Thirty-two, say it now, and I'm not looking for 32 inches of snow this next year. I mean, that's a...
I would also be looking for apples to apples numbers on these.
Yeah, I don't...
Do you want a little bit more information from Norwalk seasonal with the corrected addresses and...
Well, and if we could just put it into the same contract, like with Gilbert, how Gilbert has...
So that the forms look the same, we can look at it, compare it, and then look at...
Yeah, Gilbert's quote was just a little kind of generic and that was the one that he was under already, so...
But let's, so let's come back to that one, because I, it's a, it's a large enough number that it, it matters.
Yeah.
I agree here.
Three-year contract, so if we're looking at 23 for three years...
We've worked with both, so I just wanna get them into a, a format, either Excel or, or something that we can literally break it down and say...
I think 23 is just for, uh, the lawn care. I think there's a separate price for the snow removal as well.
Well, it looks like the snow removal was 13,475. And then the lawn mowing package seems really low.
But if you scroll away to the bottom, there's a total and it's...
So let's do this to be efficient on time, because I think we do have an auditor coming in later, maybe at 11:00, so let's, let's bring this back and we can have a special.
Yeah.
Even later this week is fine, but I, I just wanna have it in a format that we can really make a comparison and do our, our own due diligence on it.
Yeah, I agree. I, it wasn't really clear that if Norwalk was actually bidding on all the properties or just one, because they never really list...
I was gonna say, did, did Norwalk see the same contract?
No.
No, they had their own.
Yeah, okay.
Let's do that. We'll come back to it. So on that one, we'll, we'll take a pause on. Cunningham, is that next?
Doors.
Doors Inc. could be for the administrative building rekeyed. Okay, Doors Inc.
Did we get any competing quotes on that or...
Uh, no, to be honest with you, I don't know what other companies would, other than a local locksmith, what company would be able to come in and do a mass core change out to the building and repen 80 cylinders. I can have Jesse, the local locksmith. That's who we previously used when department heads want to re-lock their individual departments. They reach out to Jesse, but that's kind of where we're we're in the mess that we're in of not knowing, um, what key works. But I can do some more research into that as well. That was just a, uh, you know, end of the budget. We have the money in there and with security, we don't currently have a key log of what key opens what office door and there's a lot of masters out there, so...
Okay.
It's just a possibility, but the, with another possibility with going to the automated door systems with the electrified strikes and that stuff, so it'd be more so to look at kind of a five-year plan for this building or any other building prior to making that decision. It was just, just an option, so...
Thoughts from the board?
So you're saying more quotes plus a maintenance agreement with someone?
Uh, that, for lawn and snow, but for the, for the Doors Inc., for the, the door locks, that was just so that we could basically get, uh, get away from the, the mass amount of master keys that seemed to be out.
What's what happened is every time an employee has changed in a department, they have another key made. They have another key made. So what this does, it locks down a master key, so that there's only a handful of master keys to get into these. And then it would lock down, um, each department changing a key.
I see.
So when you have an alarm clock go off when you're delivering May baskets?
There'll be a log.
You don't have to call the police.
And what we had talked about is, with this expense, is the board willing to move forward on your badge keys? Because do we put the expense into this or do we move forward with the badge keys? So that we know who is locked in, who is locked out. It gets more instantaneous, there's better tracking. But it's a much more expensive system in which we talked about, and we have had quotes on that end up through the same company they do that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so Excel Mechanical would be installing the hard, or installing the, uh, door automation devices and Doors Inc. would be installing the door hardware, kind of like what's happened over at the Justice Center.
Do we need more time on this? I, I'm kind of...
Yeah.
The...
I kinda think so. I would love to see us go to the, the cards.
Yeah.
For those of you that know, I had a weird experience in this building about 2:00 AM on May Day when I was delivering baskets and, um, unfortunately I had to call the sheriff's department to come and figure out that it was an alarm clock. But that's something Kim and I had talked about was, you know, if we have badges and it also then we know we have that tracking system of who is coming and going, when they're coming. And, you know, if you lose your card, which I was told, I think immediately by Michaela, if you lose your card, there's a fee to replace it. And that thing is my best friend, so I'm not gonna lose it.
And this is something that we've been working in the facilities meetings, um, for the last year. So we just need direction from the board in which you would prefer, so there would have to be another work session possibly with you guys to, so that we can get direction in which way we wanna go, because it is a more expensive process to do that. There are some doors that all the hardware has to be changed out to make that happen.
It's more...
The panel equipment, which Excel would handle. And again, we've looked at that, we just haven't had a mode in which direction you'd like for us to go.
It's more of an initial startup cost, but over the long run, it's probably going to equal out by the time we replace keys and have doors rekeyed and stuff like that.
Yes.
And I, I think as we're, you know, employees leave, um, we can just deactivate the cards versus trying to track down a key. Yeah, it, it seems that that would be easier. And, and we have to have the experience of people leaving, try to access the building again, so...
I would be in favor of tabling this until we can get into a work session and, and kind of lock this down.
Yeah, and look at the pricing.
And we're having another facilities meeting today. But we can look at the old quotes and see how quickly we can get the new information for the next work session possibly, if that's something. If you wanna do that quickly.
Yeah, sounds great.
Be great. Thank you.
And I'm not trying to punt. I'm happy to make decisions, but if it's larger numbers, we gotta make sure that we're all on the same, at least have a majority of us on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up is Cunningham.
Uh, so this is not really an agreement per se. It's more so of a quote. They gave us a quote for one cell tower, uh, heating and cooling, uh, pricing. And this was one that I think Zach was working on when he was here. But basically the annual price for them for all of the cell towers would be $4,512. Uh, they do not offer a 24-hour, uh, corrective maintenance, uh, if anywhere, i- if anything were to go down after hours and we needed immediate assistance, they wouldn't be available.
It's just a maintenance contract? Like an annual regular scheduled maintenance contract?
Yeah.
Who would that fall on?
I'm sorry.
Who would that fall on if there were an after-hours call?
Uh, right now, we currently have no contract for the cell towers. That was, uh, previously handled by, um, the cell company. I can't remember what the company's...
Murphy's?
Motorola.
Motorola, that's right. Thank you.
And if the generators did go down or something like that, it would be some maintenance that's remedied anyway at this point, and you can have a 24-hour call.
Okay.
And then you have to address it at that point.
Okay.
So depending on what the circumstances, if it's electric, if it's generator, if it's...
Yep.
Heating and air conditioning or...
Awesome. All right, thank you.
So then you also have a, is this Excel contract for the same, for the tower services or...
That's correct, yep. So there's...
It's the same, I mean, it's a compete, I mean, it's another...
So that's just basically two choices that I've got. If you want me to get more, I can always do that.
But it looked like Cunningham was only for the two tow, or the one tower, the two units, right?
Yep, Cunningham just wanted to come out and see one, one site and give a surprise on, on that, as, as far as I know.
But they're also very different, so...
I think I personally be in favor of the Excel contract, because we're already...
Yeah.
I would like to be dealing with less vendors and, I mean, that would just be my preference.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, Brian. As, as far as our emergency towers, it would be nice to be, to have one contact.
For every...
Does Excel offer a 24-hour service?
Excel does. It, it stipulates in, in the, uh, agreement here that it's about 187.50 per hour for a weekend or holiday on-call service.
During weekends and buildings.
But it's being paid if, if there's an emergency.
Yeah.
I mean, no one's gonna, I mean, I don't think anyone's gonna get too, too upset over an emergency service over a weekend to get a cell tower up and running for a couple hundred bucks.
Exactly.
At least it's available. I'd be inclined to go that way as well.
I would be in favor of the Excel contract on that, or agreement?
Is that a motion, Travis?
I'll make a motion to approve the Excel contract for the towers.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, so this would be for the generators located at all of the Taylor Tower sites. It's a three-year agreement or a one-year agreement. You can select either or with the HM Craig. So, uh, this is their recommended package, which is a semi-annual visit to the generators with a major and a minor inspection with those prices listed.
And the Ziegler is the same.
Uh, Ziegler, yes. So Ziegler gave me two, yeah, Ziegler gave me two options, one of which is just a, their basic package, which would be one annual visit. And, and they gave me another one, which would be a semi-annual visit, and the semi-annual visit would be $9,874. The once annual visit would be $4,505.06.
Would they, would they be willing and able to charge us in the event that we had an issue out, I mean, at some point in the, in the year with the generator system? They'll come out and do a major repair or a minor repair or whatever.
Yep, both of them have, uh...
It's just not covered by the contract. That's just the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's an additional. I would, I would probably be more inclined to do an annual visit from them then as opposed to semi-annual unless there's an explanation as to why twice a year is...
Yeah, was, why is it twice a year? Is that better than once a year? I mean, do we need it?
With the previous...
Do we need it twice a year, I guess, is my question.
I would say that, you know, annual would be probably fine for those generators, but we do test them once weekly with load. So we do run them quite a bit, so it's never gonna hurt to have them checked out twice a year. My only concern is that under the Motorola contract that we were previously under, I, I believe it was an annual inspection, the the batteries are aging and getting older. It was previ, uh, previously just a basic standard checkup, you know, so...
But if we're checking them weekly, we would, I mean, if a battery was going bad, we would...
Yeah, we don't physically check them weekly. They just run automatically. They start up and then they power the cell tower site through generated power.
How long do they usually run during that test cycle, once a week?
About a half hour.
About a half hour?
Yep.
So we're talking they're adding roughly twenty-six hours a year just doing their testing cycle.
Correct.
And the service interval on these engines is what, five hundred hours?
Uh, I believe so. Some something around there. These are Generac, uh, which are mostly, you know, in in a HM Craig is all they deal with is Generac generators, uh, Ziegler. Uh, we utilize them over at the Justice Center with our Ziegler generator.
In in this testing that you do periodically, if something was, you would, I mean, our our maintenance would recognize if a battery was going bad during that testing or?
Uh, so uh, the dispatch center would more than likely get an email of something happening. They would reach out and call us. We would go out there and try to run the generator and schedule a transfer to generator with load and try to diagnose it if possible in-house. And then if, you know, if we're capable to purchase the part and replace it and and do whatever repairs that we could in-house to alleviate the extra cost of a service call. But there's a lot of programming that go with these uh, specific Generac systems. Uh, I did have an issue with the cell tower here in Indianola being programmed incorrectly. And um, had a Ziegler technician come out and they specified that they would have to get a uh, Generac programming system in order to even work on our stuff. And told us that they would get us a quote and it had been several weeks and they still did not get back to us. So I had reached out to HM Craig because without generated power, if those cell towers lose power, we lose communi- communication for the rural, you know.
And all those towers are Generac besides the Justice Center?
Correct.
I'll uh, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the HM Craig for the three-year and annually contract.
A second.
So that's a either or though, the one year or a three-year?
Yeah, you could basically just circle the one year.
One year or three years?
Well, it's three-year contract, but they're gonna come annually instead of semi-annually, right?
Oh, yeah. Well, they they put two agreement types on here, so you can circle one or two.
You can choose either a three-year or a one-year agreement.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to do, it's not both. It's an either or, I guess. This is the way I read the contract.
That wrong?
Yeah. So right here, under the three-year, you have year one, year two, year three costs. And then down here, you have a one-year agreement, which you can select either your three-year agreement at the.
Where did I read this? The coming twice a year or once a year? That might have been something else.
Either way, so right here, it says major and minor under year one. So you have your major inspection once and that's the cost of your major inspection and then under it, you have the cost of your minor inspection.
So they're coming twice a year regardless?
Looks like the one-year agreement is a se- a semi-annual inspection as well. So.
Okay.
So then the the agreement with Ziegler was just a one.
Annual. An annual inspection once a year. And that's where you get the cost difference. So it'd be a, you know.
So I think I'm more leaning towards the Ziegler contract. It's less money, but if the number of.
Well, my big hang-up is.
Expected once, not twice a year, so that's why it's less. So if we think we are sufficient with one annual inspection, I'd be more in favor of that contractor. And we already used the Ziegler at the courthouse.
But my big hang-up is if it's a Generac generator, it's like taking your Ford to a Chevy dealership to be worked on. They're not going to have the technology to work on it and they're going to have to consult the GM facility either anyway. It's the same type of scenario. So if we're going with Generac distributor that has all the technology to work on it, but we can select the three-year minor or major, correct? Or is it just three years? They're coming twice a year. They're doing a minor and a major?
I think, yeah, that's what it is. It's tw- two visits a year, a minor and a major visit a year.
Well, I guess we need to look at, are they including the batteries and stuff like that?
Yeah, I'd have to uh, print off the silver package.
Okay.
Deal from them, but that specifies, I don't know if we can visit the Generac maintenance website and pull up the silver package, but that pretty much.
But if it's a low battery, they're going to change out that battery versus Ziegler. They're just going to tell us that it it's gonna need a battery.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a big, yeah, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
I'm more in favor of the HM Craig one.
I agree.
It's a, it's a.
I made the motion to accept the HM Craig service preventative maintenance.
Okay.
Agreement.
Seconded that, so.
Mr. What do you think?
I I cannot understand any of this. Sorry. I'm just having an episode or something. I don't, sorry.
I keep going back and forth too.
Sorry.
Yeah, ta- take a step out.
I mean, as long as we're getting these generators looked at, you know, I don't have any preference here. I do have some experience with both HM Craig and Ziegler. Ziegler does the Justice Center very well. It was just my experience. Generac generator. Uh, the technician was a little, he was not prepared to work on the Generac generator and needed uh, further uh, I guess, equipment in order to work on that. Couldn't get back with us with the quote on how much the programming software was gonna cost them. And so that that was the only thing, but as far as either a one, a one-year or a three-year agreement, this is what their recommendation is, is the silver package, which is a semi-annual inspection. So I could reach out to HM Craig and get a lesser uh, you know, a bronze or or whatever uh, quote, and that would be an annual inspection. I had just asked them what their uh.
Recommendation was.
Yes, because they were the ones that were under Motorola contract working on them. So they had said. Yeah, they. They were.
I I'm inclined to go with HM Craig, but I but I wouldn't mind hearing from them to see, you know, maybe some explanation on why they recommended the silver package on semi-annual where Ziegler was offering a once-a-year deal. So maybe bring that one back to that work. We're gonna have a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, these just need to be approved by before July one, I assume.
Yeah.
Well, and the way I look at it is.
We can do it in a special. We can do a work session and then a special following it and and iron it out.
It's that extended warranty via in your vehicle where there's the silver, gold and platinum packages. And when you go in to have something fixed and they nickel and dime you, well, you had this, but you didn't get this and this and this in your package. So if we're if we're paying a little extra to make sure these things, because they're nine-one-one towers. We've got to have nine-one-one communications.
Yeah.
So if they are one hundred percent ready to go at all times, I would feel so much better with that. Instead of saying, hey, we got the the, you know, brown package and well, it didn't include this and this and this, and now you're gonna have to pay this and this and this to get that back up and around.
You you motioned the, you motioned the contract. Did someone second that?
I I did. I seconded it.
Well, I mean, we can.
And I guess we have it.
Do we want to hear more from them if there's something else?
I'm okay with the.
I'm okay with approving it too.
I'm I'm fine with approving it.
I'm okay with it.
Well, and that's where I think we need to put it, you know, I I feel like Josh has a really good handle on it and if he's comfortable with it. And.
All right, I agree. We got a motion and we have a second, so let's take about on it. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye, motion carries.
I believe that's it.
That would be the last of.
That's it?
Yep. So I'll get you guys some more information on the lawn care.
And then just work with Michaela on, I know we'll have a work session on Tuesday, but let's do a work session and special afterwards because we have some cleanup stuff to do and things.
Josh, real quick, is the the one at the Justice Center with Ziegler, that's, what's that?
It's a cap.
No, I understand that, but where is that contract? Is that something that's not due or is it still under warranty that we don't have to worry about a service contract on it or?
No, we do have a contract.
Okay. No worries. I just didn't know if it, we didn't see that contract in here, so. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And thank you for your patience with all these contracts and different things. We've been under a little bit of a change in um, employment, as you know, and different stuff. So if you're getting a little bad, we appreciate your time and.
So we just need to look over that lawn service again, right?
Thanks, Josh. Appreciate you.
So mostly it's lawn and snow services, but but I mean, it wasn't in a format that I could really decipher. Make it apples to apples and we can, we'll choose it on uh, next Tuesday. Okay, uh, number nine today is consider an agreement with Putney Auction Services for an auction to be held at the Administration Building Auditorium on July sixteen, two thousand twenty-five with possible action. This came up in a work session. I think that the board is um, supportive of trying to uh, move it along. We have some outdated um, equipment that that we are looking to dispose of or the equipment that we no longer use. And so we're we're basically going through um, some of that inventory. It'll be open to all departments. And then we'll see if we can raise some dollars at the uh, at the auction for it. And I'm I'm supportive of it. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Putney Auction Services um, for July sixteen.
Second.
Oh, sorry. It's a tie. Um, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre? You cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, number ten is consider updates to the Warren County Commission of Veterans Veteran Affairs General Policy with Possible Action. Come on up. And you can stay up here for item number eleven as well.
Is your auditor here though? The auditor is not waiting for you all?
I don't know. Michaela or?
She was gonna say Andrea could be the first.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
As we discussed last week, um, food assistance, we're gonna raise from forty to a hundred. Uh, rent assistance from five hundred to a thousand and created two forms for tracking purposes for funeral expenses and for grave markers.
We sort of had this discussion in that work session last week. Seemed like the board was supportive of it. Anything changed or is the board still supportive? Maybe you can re- um, re-run through those numbers one more time, just because.
Uh, for food assistance, we raised it from forty dollars to one hundred dollars. And then for the rental assistance, it was from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars.
And this isn't a recent change though. This has been, you've been doing this for?
For over a year, yes.
Yeah.
We're just making the policy conform with the reality.
And your budgets reflected this clearly and everything for the past year, year and a half, whatever it was?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the Warren County Commission of Veteran Affairs General Policy Changes as described by the uh, Veteran Affairs Department Head.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
You cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number eleven, receive and file reports, one from the Veterans Affairs. I'll make a motion to approve, receive and file the Veterans Affairs report.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
You cook?
Aye. Motion carries. It is received and filed. Um, number twelve, supervisors report. Thank you.
I don't have anything today.
No report.
I don't, I don't have anything, but um, congratulations to Norwalk Boys Soccer Team. They um, beat Indianola last night, so um, that's painful, but um, congratulations to them. We'll get you in softball. Eighth grade softball, that is, or seventh grade softball, but um, we'll get you there. So congratulations to the boys.
I'm also gonna pass because we have a meeting with the state auditor next, so. Number thirteen is public input. Anyone from the public or online would like to speak, limited to three minutes. Floor is yours. Seeing none, our next meeting date is June seventeen, two thousand twenty-five at six PM. Although we will have a work session and a special probably before that, maybe two, couple of them, so. All right, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call, please.
Arnold, I'm sorry. Erickson?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your time. Can I get you just for a sec?